Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Here.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Here.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Here.
And Mayor Buddy Pender.
Here.
We have a quorum.
And we've, we're going to have Carlos lead us in the pledge. Can you do that, young man? Okay, all right. Come on up here, man, come on.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we're going to have a quick prayer and we'll get rolling here. Thank everybody for coming this evening, this wet rainy, but we do need some rain every now and then, so. Thank you for this awesome day, Lord, we just ask your blessing over this meeting tonight, every, all the council that's here, Lord, we ask a blessing over each one of their family members, we ask a blessing over all the people here to, in the audience and online, and we just thank you again for this awesome day and for the rain, the sunshine, and all the beauty and the wonder that surrounds us, and we ask all this in your name, amen. Okay, council, how about additions or deletions? Any, anybody, Elizabeth? No? Vice Mayor? Henry?
I got one.
Okay.
Tab A.
Tab A?
Well, that's what it is.
Yeah, okay, yeah, A, yeah.
I would like to see it pulled. The reason being is, there's a state program out, I want to make sure that the Housing Committee took that into consideration, and I'm not too sure if they have, because it's new and it's recent, it's called the Florida Hometown Heroes Housing Program. I just want to make sure that the committee has reviewed that, and if they have, I've reviewed it a little bit before getting into the meat of the tab A. I just think it deserves another look see, I would like to go back to the committee and make sure that that program has been covered. The possibility is, the program from the state, quite possibly, is better than the one that we have right now.
Okay.
So that's my reasoning, I would like to have it pulled.
Okay, council, how do we, do we want to talk about this? Sure, go ahead. Okay. Are we okay with what Henry's asking for, everybody?
I kind of was looking forward to talking about it.
Okay.
Well, it can come up again sometime, but I would just like to have it reviewed by the Housing.
No, I think that they should review it. Couldn't they do it in between first and second reading? If they found something that was not right, we could not have a second reading.
Yeah, that's right.
I just hate to lose momentum on something that a lot of people could really benefit from that, that's, that's, that's affordable.
The question is, the benefit to the people, from some of the things I've read, is better with the state proposal than ours, and I don't want to rely on me, I would rather rely on the committee to investigate it, to review it.
What if we discussed it when the item came up and then we could table it if, if everybody goes along with it? I feel, I think we should take a shot at it.
Hold on, hold on, real quick, John, can we, if we, we can talk about it when we get to this, to A, but also couldn't we, if we did do the first reading, if we find something different, then we could scratch it at the, not do the second reading, right?
Yeah, you all can defer it, if you'd like, when you get to that, if you want, you can pass it, and then, like you said, if, if there's an issue, we can always address it on second reading where it can either be amended or just not, not, not passed.
Okay, okay, Elizabeth, sorry.
Well, I mean, I'm somewhat familiar with that, it's the Hometown Heroes Act that you're talking about? This, this provision that we're discussing tonight is, is completely, I mean, it's voluntary, it's, it's just something we offer, no one has to partake of it if they're a first time homebuyer, just like the Hometown Heroes Program, it's just how one would choose to purchase a home, so I don't know why we wouldn't talk about it, but it sounds like we are going to talk about it, so, there we go.
All right, all right, so we're ready to, okay, so anybody, Mark, you have anything? Okay.
You want to pull it? No.
We're going to talk about it and then, yeah, we'll get to it and then we'll.
I thought that would be the easy way to, to address it, but if you want to talk about it, go ahead, talk about it.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Mayor, at some point, I can do it at the end of the meeting, I just wanted to read a statement about another executive session, I have to read a statement under the statute, so, I can do it at the end of the meeting, but I, just before we adjourn, I'd like to do that.
Okay, we can do that, thank you. Okay, so with that being said, if there's no other deletions or additions, Chief, how about if we do a public comment and then we do the presentation, okay? So, Marnie, can we open, we have anybody to speak for general public comment?
Dan Kadenhead.
Evening, folks, I'm Van Kadenhead from Alamo Rata. I just wanted to express my extreme satisfaction with Form 6 and the fact that it's retroactive to anyone who is in office on December 31st of this year, and I think it's a really good idea, the state does it, and they have a lot of millions of dollars and billions of dollars changing hands up in Tallahassee, and I think that what's good for them is going to be good for us as far as the disclosure of everybody's position before the election, and in this particular case, anybody who was in office as of December the 31st, and I understand that from talking to John, that the Village People Attorney will not be handling the discussion about, and helping each one of you to fill out the Form 6, and that's going to be a different attorney, so I don't know who, whoever that is, I'd like, I think should, should be discussed or let known to the public who that's going to be, and I'd like to hear something from all five of you about what you think about Form 6, because I think it's going to be a welcome addition to local government, thank you very much.
Thank you, Van. Marnie, any other public comment?
Yes, we have two callers on Zoom, Joe Wishmeyer and Rebecca Souza. Mr. Wishmeyer, I have given you permission to speak, go ahead.
Marnie, can you tell them this is general public comment?
Yeah.
Not a tab.
Right. Mr. Wishmeyer, did you want to speak for general public comment?
Yes, I did. Joe Wishmeyer, plantation geek, excuse my raspy voice, I, I hope you can hear me okay, I've been a little under the weather. Mr. Mayor and council, I would like to wish you all a happy New Year. One of my hopes for the New Year is that all of us can work together in a positive and productive manner. With a new year comes the opportunity for a new start. Putting all the negatives from last year behind us and working together in a positive manner should be priority number one. Hiring a new, hiring a new manager, keeping the public involved, having a master plan, and working on critical issues that have lingered on and on and on would be a great start. A good New Year's resolution for me is to not appear so negative and to put, point out more positives that come out of these meetings. I cannot do this without your help. This is your second year working together, so the community does not want to hear words like dysfunctional, coercion, gang, and backdoor deals mentioned ever again. Please work towards unity and demonstrate cooperation. New year, new beginning, let's work together and have mutual respect for each other to restore the confidence by the resident. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next, Marnie?
Ms. Souza, I've given you permission to speak, and you can have three minutes for general public comment.
Okay, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Marnie, if she's speaking about Tab A, we'll, we'll have public comment for that, okay? It's got to be general.
Ms. Souza, did you just hear what?
Okay, I just wanted to talk about Henry's comment and just say that, I'll just make this real quick, that I'm kind of under a time crunch for it, and I know I'm not like really special or anything like that, but that's why I'm hoping that you take some kind of action tonight on that, and I'll talk more about that if, if you want me to during that tab, if not, just thank you very much, and thank you to the village and Maria and John and Kelsey for, for helping me through this, and, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Rebecca. Are there anybody else, Marnie?
Nope, that's it.
Okay. All right, Chief, you have the floor, young man.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, community. I would have loved to have done this Tuesday when there's more people that, that watched the meeting and more people in attendance, however, Carlos was in the process of packing up to move, so it is with great jealousy, I guess, and, and happiness for him that I get to announce that Carlos Mortone, my Lieutenant and Safety Officer for Alamo Rata Fire Rescue, he has effectively 14 hours, 15 minutes left in the fire service career. He has done 15 years with us here. Prior to us, he was in the military, he did a stint with the Navy, then he went corporate for about 20 years, he decided to start playing with firefighting, came down, started volunteering with us, became on-call, became one of our career staff, promoted up, became our, a paramedic, then he became our Safety Officer, and a couple of years ago, he made the rank of Lieutenant while also holding the Safety Officer position, so it's going to be a lot of shoes to fill with him unfortunately retiring up to north, but that's okay, it gives me somewhere else to go camping and to somewhere else to go visit, and I wish him all the best of luck, and Carlos, please come forward, sir.
Quick, five, 10 minutes.
Yeah, I got it.
You've got three minutes, the light starts now.
Thank you so much. Thank you, council, thank you so much. I'll make it quick, because I know you are extremely busy. Technology these days, huh? Right? Well, that's part of the plan. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve this wonderful community and to serve alongside my brothers and sisters in this fire department. On every call, at every event, at any location, you have made me and every other member of this fire department feel welcome and appreciated. Years from now, my fleeting memories will be filled with the experiences that had the greatest impacts on my life. I will look back at my time in the fire service and smile knowing that my service was meaningful, that I helped others, and that I made a difference in a special place called Alamo Rata. You're not supposed to make us cry.[1305.35][1305.39][laughter]
That's great. We're just good background shots. Get in front of us.
Can we get council in?
Yeah. Hello?
Can we stand back here?
Come on, Henry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, there's not enough room, I'll have to get between Henry and Marnie.
Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
Cry out my next chair. That's the best part of this job.
Oh my goodness, yeah.
It really is.
Okay, so we are on to Tab A then.
Tab A is an ordinance on first reading, it's an ordinance by Alamo Rata Village of Alliance, Florida, amending Chapter 22 Housing, Article 3, First Time Homebuyer Down Payment, amending Section 22-64, Providing for Separability, Providing for Inclusion in the Code, Providing for the Transmittal of this Ordinance to the Florida Department of Commerce, and Providing for an Effective Date Upon Approval of this Ordinance by the Florida Department of Commerce.
Good evening, council. This evening, we are bringing before you a proposed amendment to Section 22-64, which is our First Time Homebuyer Down Payment Program. The program was originally created in 2016 by the Village Council, it provides a no-interest down payment loan in the amount of $10,000 to first time homebuyers. If the loan recipient sells their home before 10 years, they are required to pay back the village a prorated amount of the loan based on the time the property was owned. After that, they're still required to additionally, recipients are required to pay back 10% of the original loan, which is now $10,000 upon the sale of the home regardless of how long they've held the home. This requirement that the loan recipients pay back the 10% of the original loan creates a second mortgage on the property, it has caused, in some instances, prospective homebuyers to have lost or had to turn down other lending officers, offers, because the village down payment assistance loan or other conditions resulted in an interest rate increase. The down payment assistance loan remains as a lien on the property even after 10 years of ownership. This attached ordinance, as presented at first reading, would eliminate the requirement that 10% of the original loan be paid back to the village after 10 years of ownership. The requirement would be eliminated retroactively for all recipients of the loan, and I believe currently that the, the village has issued 19 of these loans over the course of the program. At the 10-year mark, the village would issue and record a release of the lien so that first time homebuyers no longer show the liability on the property. I'm here for any questions, and I believe John can answer questions as well. Oh, and just to address one issue, the Achievable Workforce Affordable Housing Committee meets on to this coming Tuesday, they had a delayed scheduled meeting because of a no quorum, so they are reviewing this at their meeting on Tuesday, so it will be reviewed prior to, by them prior to your second reading, if it gets that far.
Okay. I, I had some dealings with this kind of a thing when I was practicing law, and what Jennifer was saying is that this is a burden on the title to the property, and once the, the first time homebuyers get it and they want to refinance or something or sell, it, it's a problem, and it, and it can delay things or even prevent them from getting financing or sometimes frustrate a sale, and because it's going to be eliminated over time anyway, I, I mean, the village has pretty much written it off, so we're just accelerating the process and we're cleaning up the title so people can move on with their lives. I think it's a good thing to do, I, I would like to do it. I don't know how that relates to what Henry's talking about, I thought his is a little different, but, you know, we have a state program, I think it's called SHIP, that has a similar feature to it, so I think it's a good thing for the folks that need it the most.
Elizabeth, do you have anything?
Absolutely, and I know we all received an email from someone about how this is specifically affecting her ability to, I think, put on a roof or something, and, and, you know, what a, what a great example for one more reason why I think we can move on with this, and, and again, I would love to, to address your concern, Henry, perhaps somewhere we can, you know, put on our website that, that this, the SHIP program is, is available for first time homeowners, homebuyers, but I don't think it relates to what this particular, what we're talking about with this amendment, so I'd just like to move on with this.
I agree.
You agree? Henry, you want to?
Yeah, my reason was for the committee to oversee this with the understanding that the state has come out with a program. I'll just read it, the program provides down payment, closing costs, assistance for the first time income qualified homebuyer, so they can purchase a primary residence in the community in which they work and serve. The Florida Hometown Heroes Loan Program also offers a competitive first mortgage interest rate and additional special benefits to those who have served and continue to serve in our community. Eligible for full-time workforce employment by a Florida-based employer can receive lower-than-market interest rates on FHA, VA, or D, Fannie Mae, and Freddie Mac first mortgages, reduced up to upfront fees, no obligation of points, discount points, and down payment and closing cost assistance. Borrowers can receive up to 5% of the first mortgage loan amount, maximum of $35,000, in down payment and closing cost assistance. Down payment and closing cost assistance available in the form of a 0% non-amortization, 30-year deferred second mortgage, the second mortgage becomes due and payable and full upon the sale of the property. Refinancing of the first mortgage, transfer of the deed or with the homeowner, no longer occupies the property as his/her primary residence. The Florida Hometown Heroes Loan is not forgivable. So that's a new program with the state. If that's more beneficial to the homebuyer, someone, someone other than me, I prefer to have them look into it, especially.
Where did you get that from?
It was sent to me.
Oh, okay, because I didn't, I'm not, I see where somebody wrote something, but I got, okay.
Yes, it's sent.
I just asked where you.
Somebody took the time to send it to me. And other thing, too, that I would like to explore, the $10,000 rather than going to the purchase of a property, it goes toward the rental of the property at $1,000 a month. the rental of the property at $1,000 a month. If we could reduce the rental of a property by 1,000, if the sheriff's department could participate in the lowering of the housing, the rental, the school board could participate, these are for their people, and they would participate in that, I just think it's more beneficial than giving somebody $10,000 to buy a home, but give them $1,000 a week and lower their rental costs. Just a thought. That's my thought. $1,000 a month, yes. Right. And I think that would be more beneficial than giving somebody $10,000, of which $9,000 is excused, but they still have $1,000 to pay back to us at the end. So I would like to have some exploratory information on that in relation to also the state program. I think I would like to move it on to the committee. If they're adjourning on Tuesday, they'll put it on their agenda and let them have a closer look at it, rather than we just blatantly okay this. The program as it speaks right now is a good program. I'm not denying that, but possibly with the state involved, and this is a new program, it might be better. And I would like somebody with the committee to tell me whether it's better or it's not. That's all. Just additional review. That's what I'm talking about.
I have a question for Jennifer. I like everything that Henry had to say, but I think we might be kind of talking about an apples-and-orange situation here. What I understood and that is what you're doing is we have this existing program, and it's got a problem for the borrowers that we had tried to help. And so by relieving this repayment burden, that not only cleans up the ones that might come in the future, but especially it's for the ones who have this problem now and had it in the past. So we're, I mean, I think what Henry's got is it's something we want to look into. It's not on topic tonight, but it's relevant to the overall plan of helping promote affordable housing. But this is something that's already happened, and we're trying to fix the problem. Is that a fair summary?
Yes, I think that's absolutely fair. And I think, you know, I agree, the program that Mr. Rosenthal read about, I was not aware of either. I think it sounds like a very interesting, wonderful program. I'm happy to research it some more, bring it to the Achievable, Workforce Achievable Housing Committee, and have them, you know, weigh in on it and determine whether it's beneficial. But I also believe that the existing program we have in place, and Mr. Quick can correct me if I'm wrong, wouldn't go away even if we offered this additional program, so that this, unless you rescinded your original ordinance adopting the program. So this problem will still consist unless we address it through this ordinance that we proposed this evening.
I have one question, because I have not been able to determine the number of people who are participating in the program as it reads right now. Do you know?
We've issued 19 loans to date.
19?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, so Kimberly, my question was, can we, you know, between you and Jennifer, looking into this thing, this state program, we get some more information on it, because, you know, maybe people have an option if the one's better than the other, or if this doesn't affect our program, but we could still have that on our website for somebody that, you know, to look at.
Absolutely. I'm familiar with the Hometown Heroes program, and it is, it is a great program, but it also has a limited scope. It is for veterans, for those who are specifically serving their country in one capacity or another, which is determined by the program at any given time. So it does have a limited scope, or what you're talking about is much broader to anyone who you've given participation in this program, all 19 individuals. And I think John also had some information that might be valuable as far as the ordinance to the question of, does this benefit people who are renting out their property? So, John?
Yeah, under the, under our program, it, the, anybody receiving funds under the Isla Marada First Time Home Buyers Down Payment Program has to occupy the residence as their, occupy the property as their primary residence, and our code requires that they file and maintain a homestead exemption on the property. So if somebody were to be renting it out, or didn't comply with these provisions in any way, they'd be in violation of the program and frankly, in violation of the loan.
Okay. Good point, John.
That was just a suggestion on my part.
No, no, I know, I know.
Okay, so Marty, we have any public comment on this?
Yes, we do. We have Deb Gillis.
Did Rebecca want to speak on this?
Her hand is not up at the moment, but if she raises it, we'll get her.
Good evening. This is, this is a subject very close to my heart. First of all, I was on council when we instituted this program in 2016. There was naysayers saying that we would never give out one $10,000 loan, which we've now given out 19. It's only 19. It's, you know, people say, well, it's only 19. But it's 19 people that now own a home in Isla Marada. They, this amendment tonight is well overdue. We needed it. I've been talking about it since I got off council because I discovered it was a problem. I work with people all the time because I sit on the board for Woods Corner, and there has been people that have not been able to get loans because of the ship loan, oh, not the ship loan, the village loan. In a relationship to the ship loan, there is nothing that says that they can't have the village loan and the ship loan, and all of that goes toward first-time down payments, and it can drastically reduce their monthly bill. And we've seen it. We've taken an extra month to redo somebody's application so that we can get them on the ship program. Ship works very hard of trying to get people involved in their program. I think it's up to $38,000, maybe $35,000 that they give these days. I'm not sure that the Hometown Hero program couldn't lay on top of those two, and they get all three programs. I would highly suggest that you pass this. It has been a problem with this $1,000, and I can even explain to you why the $1,000 is there. There was a worry that there wouldn't be funds to keep the program going, and the $1,000 was to help put money back in the pot. But it's created a problem. I actually was highly against this $1,000 when we created it, but the council I sat on, I thought it was important that we keep the program going, which it was. So I urge you to take this action and even think about farther, have staff look at it farther, because it is kind of complicated for the people to use our First Time Homeowners program. There's a lot of stuff that's legally required, and it's daunting for first-time homeowners. They don't know where to go, what to do.
Thank you, Deb.
It's a good program.
Any other public comment?
Yes, Mrs. has her hand up, so go ahead, Mrs. You've got three minutes.
Rebecca? Hello?
She has permission to speak. Ms. Souza, can you hear us?
Rebecca? All right. Let's move on then. Can't make contact. Okay, counsel. Any other, any further discussion, or do I hear a motion?
I'll move to approve it.
Okay, second?
Second.
Marty, you call the roll, please.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
That motion passes 5 to 0.
I'd just like to say I'm not adverse to the program as it reads right now. I just want to make it better. That's the only reason. Thank you.
Okay, B. John?
B is an ordinance of Isla Marada Village of Islands, Florida, amending Chapter 30 Land Development Regulations, Article 4 Administrative Procedures, Division 10 Plating, Section 30-431 of the Village Code, Providing for Severability, Providing for Inclusion in the Code, and Providing for an Effective Date.
Good evening, counsel. This ordinance is a second reading of the amendment of the plating procedures that was passed at first reading at your meeting on December 14. This, if you remember correctly, is a code change that makes it clear that no lot line modifications shall be filed with the property appraiser's office without first being approved by the village. We've been having an issue with people coming to us looking for permits and different things, and they feel like they've had, you know, subdivided lots through the property appraiser without getting them properly plotted through the village. So this is just making it expressly clear that this is a procedure that they need to follow. It's already in our procedure. It doesn't add any additional procedure. It just clarifies the procedure, and then upon passage of second reading, we will notify the property appraiser of that as well.
Thank you, Jennifer. Marty, can we open public comment? We have anybody for this tab?
I do not have anyone signed up for this.
Okay, all right. That being said, public comment is closed. Counsel, any discussion? All right, this second, right? Second reading, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Do I hear a motion?
Move for approval?
Yes.
All right. Marty, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes.
Vice, or excuse me, Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
That motion passes 5 to 0.
Tab C is an ordinance of Isla Marada Village of Islands, Florida, amending Chapter 30 Land Development Regulations, Article 4 Administrative Procedures, Division 2 Development Review Process, Section 30-212 of the Village Code, to create a zoning and progress provision, Providing for Severability, Providing for Inclusion in the Code, and Providing for an Effective Date. This is also an ordinance on second reading. If counsel recalls, this would institute a zoning and progress procedure whereby if the village makes a code change, it would, the zoning and progress procedure would come into play, thereby attempting to kind of fill that gap between first and second reading when a code change is likely going to take place to, you know, make sure that nobody slips in through there. Happy to answer any further questions if you have any since first reading.
Counsel, any questions for John? All right. Marty, any public comment on this one?
No, sir.
Okay. Public comment is now closed then. Counsel, any discussion? Do I hear a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Your second?
My second.
All right. Marty, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg?
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal?
Yes, as long as we have proper enforcement. Not add-on to the, not add-on to you, but that's just a little something I have to add-on to. Except I approve it, but the enforcement kind of perks my interest. I just have to tell you that. Go ahead.
Hey, Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney?
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
All right, so we're on D.
Yes, D is an ordinance of Isla Marada, Florida, amending Policy 1-3.1.1, Establish a Building Permit Allocation System, Policy 3.2.1.1, Distribution of Workforce Affordable Housing Allocation, and Policy 3.2.1.2, Specific Standards and Requirements for Workforce Affordable Housing, Providing for Transmitter of this Ordinance to the Department of Florida Commerce, Providing for Severability, and Providing for an Effective Date Upon Approval of the Ordinance by the Department of Florida Commerce.
Jennifer?
Thank you again. This is a second reading for this ordinance amending the comprehensive plan that establishes the allocation, the distribution schedule for 300 workforce affordable housing units, the 71,000, or 71,700 square feet of planned commercial space that goes along with that, as well as the 10 market rate of housing units that we were awarded due to the Quarry Project as part of the Q S decision. The changes from first reading include the distribution of the market rate allocations as directed by the council, which includes in 2024, five market rate allocations with land dedication and two market rate allocations without land dedication. In 2025, two market rate allocations without land dedication, and in 2026, one market rate allocation without land dedication. And then it also includes, we adjusted the allowance of the workforce housing unit be built, could be included as a duplex, and then as part of that, that we required that a minimum of two dwelling unit allocations be awarded per site because we were, the minimum you can build is a duplex, so we thought that the minimum allocation should be two per site. Those are the only changes made since first reading, and we also received, it went to the Department of Commerce, and we received the letter from them on November 21 saying that they had reviewed the letter and that they did not identify any objections or comments to the proposed amendments, and that we should act to adopt or adopt any, adopt with changes and then resubmit after second reading. We also have Rebecca Jutan, our land use consultant on the phone, who's available if there are any additional questions since first reading.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for either? Okay. Marty, have any public comment on this?
Yes, we do. Van Cadenhead and Deb Gillis.
I appreciate the fact that we have 300 units of affordable housing available to us now, and I would reiterate something I've said up here before. I would really not like to see 86 of them go to the SEMEX project in Tavernier for the county. I don't think that's going to help our administrative relief pool if we need it. And as to the 10.25 market rates that are available, I think those should be reserved or put in a special category to serve any taking suits for administrative relief that are looking for justice against the village for denying them a ability to build their house. The 10.25, I don't know where the 2.5 is going to go, but the 10 extra market rates that we have would solve 10 different administrative relief problems and taking suits. So I would urge that you would restrict those to limiting our legal liability in the future as far as shortage of BPAS applications. Thank you so much.
Okay, next?
I pass. I just wanted to have my name in the file.
Okay, all right. All right, so no other public comment, Marty? You have?
No, sir.
Requested. Okay, public comment is now closed. Counsel?
I kind of have a question. I'm sorry I didn't bring this earlier, but let me ask it in this way. So I know we've had lots of strife over the land dedication component of our BPAS system, and, you know, I just, at what point do we solve that problem? Do you have a-
You mean by getting rid of the land dedication?
Or making it more clear, making it, you know, there's lots of accusation about how our planning department explains land dedication. Can we talk about that for a minute?
I thought we got rid of it. Did we?
I don't think so, John. We didn't repeal that, did we?
For example, in this particular, what we're voting on says that we're dealing with that in 2024 and '25, well, at least in this year. So it looks like we're going to be allocating five market rate allocations with land dedication. So when do we, when do we, is there, maybe Jennifer can speak to this, or maybe I'm misunderstanding that?
I was just, the five market rate allocations from 2024, those were the five that are currently on the BPAS list, and the last- And the last direction from the Council, you all had asked to put the, to front-load those to 2024 so that all five of those will get their allocations at the beginning. There is still a land dedication process in the Village Code. That's not something that has, that has been rescinded yet. But we did on, in the moratorium, address land dedications as part of the moratorium.
So that moratorium is limited? Are we, I mean, is that something that we're fixing?
So, yeah, I think the intention was to include those as part of the moratorium and then over the next six months or so, look at that whole system and how that works and what the Council wants to do with land dedication. I would also just remind you that land dedication is solely the Council's decision. You don't have to accept land dedication. They come to the Council for approval of land dedication before they go on the list. So if some, if we don't get rid of it for whatever reason and somebody comes to you with a land dedication process, the Council can absolutely say, no, we're not accepting land dedication. That is solely your choice. I'm just throwing that out there. But, yeah, I think the intention of putting it in the moratorium was to look at it over the next six months.
But, John, what you were talking about is the people that had already had it and had been waiting forever long, and that's what, that's where, they're getting theirs this year.
Yeah, that's where those five were going to end up going. And yes, it's my understanding that as part of the moratorium, staff was going to look into the system as a whole, and that includes the land dedication. And then that would be presenting that back before Council. And that was, you know, the intent, or at least part of the intent on the moratorium, so that we could pause that. You all could get a grasp on what was going on and then make whatever changes you felt were necessary based upon recommendations from staff as well.
Yeah, because I could see where Elizabeth, this would be easy to be confused, okay? I understand what, when you were, you know, I saw it too, but I thought it was because we had, those people couldn't get theirs until this year.
But, but we still aren't, we're still calling for it in 2025.
No, we're not. 2025 just has two market rates without land dedication.
I am misreading it.
Okay.
I am totally misreading it.
All right, okay.
Yeah, so, so once these five get allocated, there will be no more allocations available for that category, including land dedication. Right?
Okay. We all good? All right, if there's no other conversation or discussion with Council, do I hear a motion?
I'll move for approval.
Do I hear a second?
Forward, I'll second it.
Marnie, call the roll, please.
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolen.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
That motion passes five to zero.
Okay.
We are on to.
E, right?
E. I will read the title, and then there's a statement that I'll have because this is quasi-judicial. E is a resolution of the Village Council of Isla Marada, Village of Islands, Florida, considering the request by Chris Trentine for administrative relief from the Village Building Permit Allocation System BPAS for property located at 122 Iroquois Plantation Key as legally described in Exhibit A, providing for transmittele to the Department of Economic Opportunity and providing for an effective date. Please, Council, please be advised that this agenda item is quasi-judicial in nature. If you wish to comment on this item, please inform the village clerk by filling out the available sign-up form. An opportunity for persons to speak on each item will be made available after the applicant and staff have made their presentations on each item. As a reminder, testimony in quasi-judicial items must be in person. Zoom testimony is not permitted. These proceedings will be handled in accordance with the Village Code requirements. All testimony, including public testimony and evidence, will be made under oath or affirmation. Additionally, each person who gives testimony may be subject to cross-examination. If you do not wish to be cross-examined or sworn, your testimony shall be disregarded. The general public will not be permitted to cross-examine witnesses, but the public may request the Council to ask questions of staff or witnesses on their behalf. The full agenda packet on each item is hereby entered into the record along with the Village Code and Comprehensive Plan. Any correspondence that was received by the village staff is included in the file and part of the record. Persons representing organizations must present evidence of their authority to speak for the organization. Further details of the quasi-judicial procedures in Section 30-256 of the Village Code may be obtained from the village clerk. Tonight, there's one quasi-judicial item, which I read, which is Tab E. At this time, I'd ask anyone who intends to speak on the quasi-judicial item tonight, please raise your hand to be sworn in by the clerk if you intend to speak at all on Tab E.
Hey, in the matter in which you are about to give testimony, do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? The witnesses have been sworn.
Thank you. Council, before we begin, I'd like you to please disclose any ex parte communications that you may have had with the applicant or anyone else. Again, this is Tab E. Please include whether the person's represented any group or entity as well as the subject matter. Thank you.
I only spoke with the village attorney and the planning director.
I spoke to John. He called me today about it, but that's it. It's the only person I talked to.
John for me as well.
Yeah, John and Jennifer.
Yeah, no, you don't, you guys don't need to disclose us, but happy to be mentioned.
You're good?
I haven't spoken to anybody.
Okay, all right, okay.
All right, we're ready to proceed.
Okay. All right, so we're ready to go. Jennifer?
Thank you. As you remember, this item, 122 Iroquois Street, Request for Administrative Relief was on your agenda on November 9th, 2023, the time a full presentation was made. The applicant, Chris Trentine, had applied for administrative relief for the property at 122 Iroquois Street, the time the Council directed the village attorney to meet with the applicant and discuss the, either the purchase of the property or other options. And then we would present additional, the discussion outcomes with you at this time. So I can go through the whole report again for you or we can talk about what the outcome of those discussions were, whatever pleases the Council.
Okay, Council, any questions for Jennifer? Anything?
Hey, Council, just to make it clear for the record, this would be, this is a continuation of the November meeting on this, so that, that discussion and presentation would also be part of the record. Just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Okay. All right, so Chris, come on. You got the mic.
Good evening, Council. Chris Trentine, Isla Marada. John, had you already discussed it with him, or should we?
I did, but, I mean, I can present or if you want to present it, what we discussed so that.
So whatever, you guys heard some of it, but since the last discussion we had, it sounds like that wouldn't work out. So the other options I had brought up is you could purchase the property for me for $450,000, which is, I think, a little bit below market value. Or I'd be willing to go to $400,000 if you guys would give me the dry lot TDR so I could transfer it to one of my other lots or another dry lot. Or, I don't even have this, but I thought about this today. I'd be willing to do it for $350,000 if I get the TDR and you guys would donate the lot to Habitat to let them build on it. And they could use one of their affordable allocations that they have, so.
And then obviously, there's also the availability of the, actually approving the administrative relief application, obviously, that is available to.
Right.
John, can I ask another question? I attended a council hearing probably six years ago where there was a large parcel, environmentally sensitive parcel that had come before the Council for an administrative relief application after waiting for four years. And during that presentation, there was a discussion about awarding the allocation to that applicant for that property with the condition that it could not be used on that property, but it could be transferred to another qualifying receiver site. Is that an option that we could discuss tonight, or is that prohibited?
I don't see why we couldn't discuss it under, I guess it would, that would kind of fall under the subsection three.
Other?
Other things. And I don't know, I'm not familiar with that discussion, but obviously, any transfer would need to comply with the comp plan and the code. And, you know, there's restrictions into being able to transfer from Class 1, 2, or 3 in the environmental sensitivity of the lot.
The instance I'm talking about was not approved, but it was discussed. So I assumed it was possible, so.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of that, but I can certainly look into that. I mean, it's certainly something we could discuss also with the, with the applicant, the applicants here too, so.
Yeah. So, so, John, why can't we, as you and I talked today, I'm not interested in buying it. I don't think, for what we just paid for 90 acres over there, okay, compared to buying one lot, a quarter acre lot or whatever. But, but I think if we were to give Chris his permit from administrative relief, and he can move it, but like you told me today, dry to dry. In other words, can't go to dry to wet, or, but he can move that development right to one of his other properties.
Yeah, this, this is a dry lot, and we have restrictions in terms of, you can go from wet to dry, wet to wet, but dry lots can only go to dry lots.
Right.
And that's, that's built into our comp plan and our code. If you do transfer, or if any property owner transfers their rights, there's a conservation easement that goes along with that. And so that would, would come into play if there's a transfer of development rights off of, off of this parcel, just like any other parcel.
Okay, so there's another option, Chris.
Give me the permit?
Huh?
What? I'll take the permit.
That, what we just talked about, this is just me now. I'm saying that we give you, you know, an administrative relief permit, and you could move that to another property.
The only reason I came up with these options was because it sounded like you guys, you know, didn't want to give a regular permit to a regular lot. You wanted to maybe save them for a canal lot. So if you had to buy that, it'd be a lot more expensive than buying our lot. But obviously, if you want to give me my administrative permit, I mean, we call it a day, then I'm fine with that, too.
I have a question. And, you know, I spoke with John and Jennifer today, and what I, what I had asked for them to do is to actually give their advice and provide some, some context, some more context to which, under which we could make some decisions. So, for example, you know, one of the, one of the issues here is, you know, we have the three remedies that they lay out. And one of them is to offer to purchase the property at its fair market value. And what we have here is, is what, is what the, what you would like to get out of the property, but that's different than what the village would, that might be a different figure than what the village would offer to purchase the property for. And, John, you mentioned, you know, when I asked, what happens if they don't take our purchase offer? You didn't, I'm not sure, maybe you could speak to that? Because that's, that's, that's an option that might be part of a strategy that our planning department has for, in the bigger picture of how to, you know, how to deal with administrative relief.
Yeah, I think that, you know, we, as with any property, this, this property is, as with any other, you've got a, if there's a seller, they're potentially willing to sell it at a certain price. But as a buyer, you may or may not be willing to acquire it at that price. I would say in order to determine if it is a fair market value, if, if the village is not interested at the price that's being asked, I would say would require an appraisal. And the appraisal could come in as to what the value is of that property. And then if the village was interested in acquiring it at that amount, then the Council could authorize the, an offer to acquire it, whatever that amount might be.
And then what if the, what if the owner of the property says no? Then what? Then does that mean, you know, thank you, you've been on the list, you just have to stay back on the list, on the BPAS list, and hope you get to the top? I mean, what, what happens then?
It.
Because this is part of our code, I'm not making it up, it's right here.
Yeah, no, and you're not at all, and it doesn't really address that. And so I would say that they would not come off of the BPAS list if we offer to purchase it and they say no. My direction would be that they would stay on the BPAS list, and they could continue to move up or move whichever direction, depending on the number of applicants. But, yeah, it doesn't, the code does not spell that out exactly what happens, but that would be my interpretation that they would remain on the BPAS list, and they would not get the administrative relief, if that's the avenue that was pursued.
So, so that's kind of an important component here because it's, you know, it's clearly an option to look at, but we're not, we don't, we don't have that information to have a fair conversation with this, with Chris, right?
As to the appraised value.
I understand what you're saying, but he's four years. So that moves him to administrative relief. That, those are our rules, not something just being made up.
No, no, but the thing about this is that, is that the way our code reads, it provides three options, which are outlined here. So one of them is to offer to purchase the property. But what happens if we don't, and, and, and so, just to, this is where, this is where, just to go back for a second, when I spoke with John and Jennifer, I said, well, what is the larger strategy? Which, what I would like to do tonight is ask Jennifer and John to address a larger strategy for how we deal with administrative relief. Considering the future of our lots and how we, and the anticipated lawsuits that will come from takings, is there a better way to use our administrative relief allocations? And we don't know because we don't have it in front of us. And so what is being asked of us is to make a decision without, without a greater understanding of what's in front of us.
Well, I, I'm sitting here thinking, and Mark talked about it a minute ago. I owned my lot on Key Honey. I waited four years. I applied for administration relief. It was high hammock, and I got to clear 50% of it. I actually sold it, okay, because of the wastewater thing that was going on. Nobody knew what the, how much we were going to have to pay for our assessment. I wasn't going to spend $40,000 on assessment, so I sold it. But, and I had to get a letter from FWC for the swallow-tailed butterfly, for the white-crowned pigeon and all this. And actually, Councilman Warner, at that time, tried to, he asked Conus if they could put more demands on me, but Conus said you can't. He's, according to the code, he's doing everything that he has to. But I got my permit, all right? So I think if he, if, he's waited four years, and we haven't told him what we're going to do. But Elizabeth, my, my problem is, we just bought 90 acres for $650,000. And when John called me today, I said, I'm not interested in buying one lot, a quarter acre, or not even a quarter acre, whatever it is, a little tiny lot that's in a developed neighborhood for $450,000.
Buddy, so what, what is happening here is, and again, I'm sorry, Chris, that, I, I'm sorry that, that, this has nothing to do with you.
I pulled the short straw. I'll be the first one that might get denied administrative relief.
I mean, but what's happening here is that, I'm just going to call you the applicant because this is not personal. The applicant is saying, this is what I want for the property. That's different than us saying, the village, who, you know, that's who we're tasked to work for here. That's different than us saying, we did an appraisal of a lot, a vacant lot. And I don't know, maybe, you know, it's, who knows what that appraisal will come back for? Probably not $450,000, a vacant lot without a permit on it.
Who'd care for more?
Well, I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure it wouldn't.
Technically, John, the appraisal would be based off of it with a permit because that's what you're, you're, we're selling.
I mean, I don't know, that's what I spoke, I spoke to John, and you said, no, it wouldn't be with permit. I mean, and this is a good example of, of the Council being put into a position without all of the information. So when we spoke, you said, no, it would be an appraisal without an, or a building permit on it.
I thought it would be with the permit.
Yeah, well, it doesn't currently have a, it doesn't have any building rights allocated to it currently. So, yeah, I think that the appraisal would be without it. I think that the applicant is, obviously, I think he's looking to sell it as, with a, a building, a buildable lot.
That is, that is not the point I'm making. Obviously, if he has, I mean, this, there are two things happening here. What we're saying that is that if we get an, if the village gets an appraisal of a vacant lot, which is what it is, that is, you know, then we would be able to offer that fair market value of a vacant lot to, to the applicant. He may say no. And our code does not. He may say no, and our code does not then address that.
Well, what happens, so, the applicant is not off of the B-Pass list currently.
That's right.
He is on the B-Pass list, as with any applicant. There is this alternate procedure for administrative relief that they can apply for once they have hit the magic number of four years. If, for some reason, an administrative relief allocation is not awarded, or, and there is no acquisition of the property, the property and the applicant remain on the B-Pass list. They, and they will stay on the B-Pass list, I guess they could come back and apply again. But, I mean, I'd have to look at the code, but they are still on the B-Pass list. And they do not, they do not come off of that just by applying for administrative relief.
That's absolutely right. And if nothing else, this conversation points to a problem in our code, perhaps? Because what our code says is, we can offer to purchase it, we make up the price. It doesn't come from the owner of the property. We do an appraisal, find the fair market value, and say, "Would you take $100,000?" And when you say no, we don't have a remedy for that.
Yeah, I would say that the village council offer, under a fair market value, should be based upon an appraisal. It shouldn't, or, it shouldn't, if...
We're not in disagreement.
Yeah, I'm just saying, if it's, if the appraisal comes in at X, it really shouldn't be X minus 20%. I mean, the appraisal is at least the fair market value.
Right, and that's not, that's not the issue.
Yes, but the applicant is not required to accept it, you're correct.
Right. But that doesn't, but then what happens to the applicant? He just goes, he just...
Stays in B-Pass list.
Right. So, that's an option that...
Unless there's an alternative solution.
Is it fair when people, we're, somebody's been waiting four years. If it was me, I'd be very mad that, we're going to try to change the rules now. If we changed them, and he was in the system and knew that we were changing them, knew it was already changed, maybe he wouldn't have bought the lot, maybe he wouldn't have applied for administration relief, but he followed the guidelines of our B-Pass and our administrative relief.
Maybe you could speak to that, John, or Jennifer, Buddy's concerned. I think there's a misunderstanding of the changing of the rules.
Yeah, I mean, we're following the same process that we have in place. I think it sounds, I think what the mayor is getting to is that, I think we have always approved it, approved the administrative relief application. But under our code, there are other alternatives, and that was what was discussed in November, and that was what was asked to bring back, as to, do we want to approve the administrative relief program, or do we want to follow the other alternatives? So, we are following our code that is and has been in place, yes.
Okay, I'm jumping in here before she starts. This goes back, and you're 100% correct, and he's 100% correct. This all goes back to the problem that we have with our code. It's up to us to fix it, and I don't think he should pay the price by being put back into B-Pass, because now we realize, true, he's got a high value on that piece of property, I understand it, but it's sort of like, we have, keep talking about these codes, these things that are wrong, things, and yet, nothing gets changed, and these people, tick-tock, tick-tock, on their time, he's at four years. And to say, "Okay, we're now going to fix it," and so you go back in B-Pass, I have a problem with that. I just do.
I'm not saying that...
Oh, I know, and we need to fix it, though.
I'm just saying...
So, fix it.
You're using this opportunity to bring this, point this flaw out...
Which is true.
To try to get it fixed.
Yes.
Well, I think that, like...
You're right.
And outside perspective, so, my uptake, and I know you guys all have a little bit of knowledge in this, like, when you, when the county comes in and buys land, or whatever, like, technically, it should be appraised on if I get this permit, because technically I should deserve it. Whether you guys use that permit for somebody on a canal lot, because it's worth $1 million, $2 million for them, versus the $450,000 for me, that's fine. So, that's where I got my number from. There was a lot that sold for $550,000 with a permit, that was a little bit bigger than ours on a dry lot. So, I said, "That's where..." I'm not trying to, like, jab the system or anything, that's where the $450,000 number. So, I think that's where there's some confusion, too, is if it should be appraised with a permit on it, or without it. And on the other side of that, since I think, if you just said no, you know, obviously, there'd probably be an attorney involved, because I would be the first, "No." So, I think that's, I mean, I think we've got options, and I understand, because this could come up down the road, where Option C is kind of up in the air.
But, Chris, there are other properties right on this island that are $450,000. They're in the permit system, okay, way down, but they're $450,000.
But they haven't...
And it might be a long time, but they hadn't been here no four years.
Right, well, that's kind of where I'm getting at. So, that's why I'm just a stepping stone in the system that's getting stuck with this problem, but that's where I came up with the numbers, just so you guys know.
I've heard some things, I think, that if you put the pieces of the puzzle together, I think we have a good answer that is a win-win. The way the code reads is that there is the A, the B, and the C. And, you know, we have always, since Buddy and I and Henry have been on the council, we've always stood by the principle, if you follow the rules, you play by the rules, and you do everything you're supposed to do, then you're entitled to your permit. And this, that's under B-Pass. In this particular case, under administrative relief, he has done all of that, but there is no obligation on the part of the village to give him that, because of that last thing, other. We can do something else. And as I spoke earlier about the case, that was, it was for the big property, the 21 acres next door to the Rain Barrel. It was environmentally sensitive, so, and that one, in that case, they gave it to him, but it came with a conservation easement that was 20 acres, or close to that, rough numbers. And so that was kind of the lubricant that made that deal go through. They also discussed, well, that particular application had a single-digit B-Pass score, it was six, seven, or eight, or whatever. It was on Florida Forever. It had crocodiles, and indigo snakes, and butterflies, and elephants, and all the other things that, you know, you lose points for. And so, they said, "Well, we'll give you five points, and then you go back in line." And that would have apparently been a legally permissible option. But I think, I heard something else, that, you know, we have a chance to do something here that's a bonus, and that is, Chris apparently has another lot that he maybe has in mind, where if we did what we were talking about, which was to offer him, you know, approve the allocation, but require him to use it elsewhere, we get to take out two lots with one permit, just like we did with the lot dedication. So, that is really good for me. I like the sound of that. And I would like us to talk about that. Apparently, Chris, do you still, does that still sound good to you, too?
Yeah, I mean, I'm willing to work something out. I mean, I know it sounds like a lot of money. I mean, obviously, I'll take the, like I said, I'll take the permit and go my way, and we'll build a house, and I'll be happy, but, you know, I was thinking the same thing, that, I mean, it sounds like a lot of money, but you're really getting rid of two, because I'm on the list for another one as well, and that one could technically come off the list, or another one on the list could come off.
Well, so, consistent with our, I think, our emerging greener policy that we started out on Tuesday night, this, the things that I haven't really said much about is, this is a hammock lot, and we were protective of hammocks on Tuesday night, and I think we should continue and be consistent with that theme. The other is, and this is a little bit personal to me, I lived four doors down from this lot, from this property, on the same street for 12 years, and the people across the street and beside it are former neighbors of mine, and they've reached out to me, and they don't want this there. They don't want any more traffic, crowds, building, they like the trees, and the trees make a buffer from the highway noise. So, I feel that this is kind of a smaller enclave issue, rather than just a single lot. And so, if Chris is willing to look elsewhere to take that permit that won't run afoul of the neighbor's sensibilities, and it stays as a hammock, I think everybody's going to win. The really only open question for me is, I'd just like to know where it's going, so that it doesn't go into another environmentally sensitive property. I mean, maybe Chris could, you can tell us now where he wants to go, or you can come back next time, or work with Jennifer, so that, I would kind of like to know if you have in mind a place where it's going to go, or if you want some time to go hunt for a lot. That's fine, from my standpoint, that would be fine, too.
We can keep that in the open, and something we can work with, and like, make sure that Jennifer says, it's a, like, it can be a non-environmentally sensitive lot, or one of the lots on the airport that we have. So, I'm okay with it saying, like, it's not going to be on, going to another environmental, environmentally sensitive lot.
Any thoughts for that?
If we can negotiate a number.
Elizabeth, I know you want to say something. I'm willing to entertain that, but I'd like to see that come back in, with some clarity for where the, where this allocation would go, as opposed to just, okay?
We'd like to know where the receiver site for that allocation would be, kind of like a TDR. Does that sound like we're playing within the boundaries?
But, John or Jennifer, couldn't we, you guys, if we award this to him tonight, and then before he gets that award, he come, to take it to another lot, we would have to, it would have to be approved, that lot, you know, it's going for, from apples to apples, not apples to oranges.
Yeah, there's provisions in the code, and under our TDR provisions, as to habitat analysis and classifications, that it would have to comply with.
Well, technically, technically, in the code, it's the opposite. So, what I want to do is take it, so, there, and just to be correct, I mean, they're saying that lot's environmentally sensitive, if you walk it, it's mostly invasive stuff, but regardless, no big deal. Because we own the lot next door, and end up, they told us to clear the whole thing at the end, because it was all invasive. But, we would have to just make it so that we wanted to go from, it normally has to go from environmentally sensitive to environmentally sensitive. We would be doing it from environmentally sensitive to a non-environmentally sensitive to...
Yeah, it just has to be less environmentally sensitive.
Correct, correct. Just, so, there's no confusion.
Okay.
And again, we need to look at, I understand what you're saying, but I just have a problem when it starts messing with peoples who have been waiting and doing everything we said. That's what I have a problem with.
Yeah, let me just, sorry to make you wait on, I mean, let me just ask you, I wanted to ask a question about the example you were giving, about the 20 acres, and, so, why didn't you choose to, the second option, which was to offer the, offer to purchase the property at its fair market value, which would have been, who knows? I don't know, whatever, whatever that would have been.
I think they had it listed for $6 million.
But that, so, the point is that, that's, and I need to think, I'm clearly not explaining myself well. What you're listing it for has nothing to do with the appraised value. So, why didn't, why didn't the village go and do an appraisal and offer that purchase price to the person? It's not about what they want.
So, I think I might have kind of...
Do you understand the question?
I get that, and I want to tell you what I think the answer is, but I want to say more beyond that. This property was on the Florida Forever list, and the Florida Forever list will buy environmentally sensitive property. The Achilles' heel of that program is it requires a willing seller. And in that case, they did not have a willing seller. So, that, that's what the council ultimately said, "Fine." But what I wanted to say, though, is, you know, in the same sense that we don't have an obligation to award an allocation, we can, we can do, you know, answer C, or Part C, you know, Option C, which is other, we do have a statute, a new statutory obligation to treat people fairly and to respect property rights. And then in the federal constitution, if we take those away, we're on the hook for just compensation, whatever that means. But the way you figure out that is with an appraisal.
And that is what this allows us to do.
We can, we can.
So, I just would, as we're sitting here, looking at very few properties, lots of people with lots of property rights, this, tell me what I'm missing here. Isn't this an opportunity to create a strategy to take properties off of, out of service, essentially? I mean, it says it right here.
Yeah, we can.
And it's a legal method to do that. Why, and I understand, I'm not promoting it tonight, but since we're all here together, and we have this opportunity to discuss, and it's going to be a short meeting, why aren't we utilizing this provision?
We just never have. This is the, he's the guinea pig tonight. This is the first time we get to do this.
So, when would be an appropriate time to talk about using this provision to take properties out of the system? Because that's what it is. And there are people who are going to be on the list for four years, that this, you know, this will come back around, and I would love to set an expectation that when you sit on the list for four years with your low score, and, you know, again, nothing personal, but let me, I can use here, use as an example, someone will be sitting, sitting on the list for four years with a low score. Why can't, when is the appropriate time to set the expectation that, sure, we'll offer a fair market value, which will not be what it, you know, which will not be what you probably want to receive for your property? And I, I'm, this, we're a little bit on a sidebar here, but it's pretty important.
I understand that, Elizabeth, but I want you, would you put yourself? I'm putting myself in issues, if somebody spent the money to buy the lot, and go through the system, and we've not told, this is what you have to do, A, B, C, D, and he gets his permit, and then all of a sudden, when he comes to get it, he spent an extra $1,500 applying for the administration relief application, in addition to his permit fee, been waiting over four years, and now we're going to tell him something different. We can't...
Buddy, I mean, just to be clear, this is, this is no longer about this person, okay? But it actually...
Anybody.
It says it right here in our code. I mean, there's no secret. We have the option to offer the appraised value. It's in writing, there's...
But look at it this way, if we're taking two lots, we're getting, if we're doing, we're taking, we're getting rid of another one of his lots that he's waiting on a permit, okay?
Yeah, this doesn't have to do with Chris.
I know, but I'm just saying, I'm using that example, this could be somebody else. And that lot that we're talking about will never be built on.
I would say, to follow up on what Councilwoman Jolene was discussing, and her question about kind of the broader, you know, the broader view of lots, not just, not just the lot we're talking about tonight, I think what would be, would be helpful, or a second suggestion that I would make, is for us to convene to discuss priorities, and things that the council might be interested in, so that when the planning staff analyzes an application for administrative relief, the planning staff can say, "This meets your priorities, or the priorities of the village to potentially acquire this, and you may want to consider offering fair market value," so that that can be a component of the administrative relief analysis. And then that way, we're not kind of talking, we have some guidance as to what we're talking about, as opposed to what we're doing now, which, which I think is a good and healthy discussion. And, sorry, Chris, that you got brought into this, but, you know, this is kind of what triggered this. But I do think that this is part of a much broader look at the B-Pass list and the administrative procedure, and I think it's a, it's a, it's a great starting point that Councilwoman Jolene has brought forward, and I think it's a, it's a good idea, that that way, we as a village can identify these, and can give you all the information that you might want, that, you know, this might be a one that you're, you might be interested in. And that way, we can, we can have those considerations, or have that as part of the consideration that's presented to you all.
I would like to take an opportunity to mention something relevant to what you're saying. Not so very long ago, the county had this fantastic program where they were offering lot owners, the fair, the property appraisers' fair market value for the property, to purchase the development rights only off of the property, and then they would deed-restrict it, and then, it was especially interesting to someone who owned a home next door, where they could still use that lot for accessory uses and so forth, they just couldn't build a house on it. It was wildly popular, so much so that they ran out of money. And the money came from, Kimberly might know something, the 156 Fund, or something, I don't even know what I'm saying what that means, but it was a part of our tax revenue, countywide stuff, that was kept in a separate account designated for that purpose. I don't think we have enough in ours, I don't even know if we have one. But that's the kind of creative thing that we can get into, when we start talking about, we don't have to buy the whole property. We can buy less than that, that gives the, you know, adjoining landowner a right to still do something with it, or just enjoy it as a buffer from whatever on the other side. But it takes it off of our 1,101 vacant property lists that we might be responsible for in a takings claim. So, there's a ton of stuff we should talk about. It's beyond the scope of his application, and we're wasting his 1,500 bucks right now, but I'd like to get to the point where we do that sometime.
We could discuss it tonight, or another time, but I think, yeah, not during the record of this quasi-judicial...
Yes, exactly. I agree. And my thing is, I don't want to pay... I agree. And my thing is, I, I don't want to pay $450,000 for a lot in a neighborhood. I'd rather use that money for a million dollar lot that we can't get, that's very environmentally sensitive with mangroves, crocodiles, whatever, flaming, uh, Rosiatt, Spoonbill, something, something, you know? We'd put that money towards something like, you know, instead of taking something like that, but let them have their building right. And in this case, it's taking two properties off, out of our BPAS.
And I think some of those things that, um, that you were talking about are, are important for the, the broader discussion that Councilwoman Jolyn was talking about is, you know, what are some of the priorities? Um, are they environmental priorities? Are they, um, uh, work, you know, workforce achievable housing priorities? Some of those things are, will be important so that the staff can analyze it and say, you know what? This one has the Spoonbills on it, you know, or if that's, if that's one of the priorities that's identified. Uh, and so I think that, um, you know, going along with, with, with her suggestion, um, I think that that's a, a good discussion, and I think that that will, will help staff in, in analyzing it, uh, you know, once we get, uh, once we have that.
Okay.
So is our direction for, um, for Chris and Jennifer to work together and then bring this back with a, with, with clear understanding about where, where the allocation will be placed?
I don't, I don't, no, I don't want to do that. I, I think we need to plan another meeting. We're, we're sitting here now discussing something we're going to do in the future. I think, Chris, this, I'm not going to say Chris, but I'm saying this particular administration relief thing we're talking about, I think he's been waiting and he, we're here. I think we need to move on it.
That's what I just said. I said.
But not have to have him come back to us.
Except that what we're.
We're, we're going to need to approve the receiver site, but you know, he's paid his money and he's here. We, he's, he's entitled to an answer of some kind tonight.
I think, are we not in agreement that his suggestion of move, of, of putting this allocation onto another property is what we're, is what we're in agreement? But we want to see that.
Subject to our approval.
Right.
It is, but John said it is. It's in our code that it has to be approved before it could be moved. Kimberly?
But that was, that was option B, just to clarify, right? I had three options, right? I had the $450,000 option where you guys just buy it and take it. I had the $400,000 option where you guys take it and I get the TDR, the allocation to move to another lot, which we can have the next meeting to say which lot that is, if that's, or the $350,000 option.
No, 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 no. We're, we're saying something totally different.
Ah, I think, I think here's the.
We're not, you're saying we're going to give you 400,000 and the permit?
Correct.
No, no.
No, I don't think that's what we've been thinking.
Uh, what we said last time was if, I would just take the, I would take a waterfront TDR, yes, and just.
You can't do that.
And go away, but that's the, the problem. So we can't do that.
Is we give you the allocation and we understand, and, and you put it where, somewhere else on another lot you own. This 122 Iroquois stays, is, is probably going to be a conservation easement, and then you put that allocation on another lot that we all ag, agree on. That, that's what.
That, that doesn't make financial sense for me or.
Well, you would, you would still own the lot, but you, I guess the, the market for that lot would be to the neighbors on either side of you.
Right, and I, I don't, I mean, unfortunately, I, like you said, the neighbor on the one side doesn't want it built on at all, so they're not going to buy it, and the neighbor on the other side, um, still need to, would need to talk to and see what, what they would be willing to do, but that was the consensus.
Okay.
Go ahead, Henry.
So you got down to 350 at some point tonight, right?
Yep.
Can we do better than that before you leave?
You know, we're, we're both, we're all on the same team here, right? Doing, doing the best for whatever we can do.
I understand, but I'm, I'm representing the city.
Oh, I.
Understand?
Hey, the, the best deal on both sides is when it hurts a little bit for everybody, right?
Everybody's equally unhappy.
So, so Henry, I just want to.
What I have, what I have is you paid 430 for three lots, is that correct?
Yep, six years ago.
Yes, whatever it was, you paid 430. You wound up selling one of them for 270.
Correct.
Another one for 150.
I think so.
A total of 420. You're almost ahead of the game now because you paid 430 six years ago, whatever, but you sold them for 420. I'm going to use that number to convince you that the 430 or the 350 that you came up was not realistic. There's one appraisal for $137,000, 137,376. Are you acquainted with that number? Okay, well, believe it's there, whether it's accurate or not.
Oh, yeah, I'm sure that property record probably has that.
Yes, that's the question. That's the number that I'm using, and you're using 350. Forget about the moving of this and that, the lot, this lot or the other. Let's, 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 let's deal with what we can do on that. That's what I do for a living. I negotiate deals for people and do the best thing I can. Now, this time, my client is the city, and I'm looking at you to do something with the 350. Want to think about it? Want to walk outside? What, what do you want to do?
Make an offer.
Make an offer.
Make an offer. What do you guys want to do?
I'm looking at 137 or, or 150, whatever you want to use, which is half of what you proposed.
Well, that's, that's appraised without sitting in here, waiting for years without administrative relief or having any of the costs or any of the overhead or anything holding on to that for the last five years.
I'll give you a time to explain the 350.
I, I have to interrupt. I'm sorry.
I think we need it, John, John.
Well, I, I think, you know, it, we have an obligation to the taxpayers. I think it's political malpractice to buy something without getting an appraisal. We got to do that. So we can negotiate till the cows come home, but I think, I think he needs an appraisal, we need one. We, let's, we can, we can put some money up for that. That's not a big deal. Takes a little while. You don't like that?
Yeah, I do. But I, I just want to kind of, we, I think some, just kind of pull things back. I think what we, we had, we had, we were all under the impression that we would grant the allocation and then require that it be moved, uh, we're, we're exercising option number three. So we would, we would grant the allocation and require that it be moved to another property. There's no money exchanged here. You get the allocation and you put it somewhere else. Now, that's our, that's, that's exercising option number three, and I'm, I'm seeing that you're shaking your head no, which is fine, but that then puts us into this situation that goes to our lawyer to figure out what happens if he says no. Well, that was our best offer. You said no, now what, lawyer?
Well, he could file a claim. Who knows how successful it would be, but he's stuck with a lot he can't sell. That's the problem.
And he's still going to have to pay tax on it and he can't use it.
And the biggest thing is, is, right, I'm, I mean, year after year after year after year after year after year, administrative relief, here's a permit, administrative relief, here's a permit. So I mean, I'm, I'm willing to take the permit and I'm trying to give other options to be, I feel like somewhat fair, because I'm obviously appraising what I think it's worth with a permit, because technically I did get approved for administrative relief. I haven't gotten approved for you, so I feel like it's different than being on a list and being like, okay, what's this guy's appraised at? Because he's, doesn't have a permit, he's still on the list at number 35, and he's two years out for administrative relief versus I'm here in front of you, got the paperwork that, you know, so I think that's where there's a back and forth where Henry's like, yes, it's on property appraisers, it's 137,000, but technically, I'm here to get a permit. So, I mean, I think that's going to be a thing with the appraisers as well, is what, what's the appraisers appraising?
Well, if, if you get appraised value and the right to transfer it somewhere else, you may come out ahead because the receiver site may be a, a better property, and you may increase the value of that receiver site by a much higher amount or percentage than you would get off of this. So your, your net on it is much greater. In, in other words, if you have a, a more, let's say, an airstrip lot, I don't know what those are worth, half a million bucks, something like that, without a permit, you put a permit on it and it instantly goes way up, and that delta difference of the increase may be a lot more than you would get if we gave you 350 for this.
To an extent, but the airport lot's already worth something because it's on an airport.
I, I just, I know, I know, I just.
I understand what you're saying.
I think we have two things that we need. One is an appraised value and two, uh, an idea from Chris of what receiver site or sites, I, I would entertain more than one, and maybe we should come back if you would indulge us. I mean, we, we don't have enough information tonight. We need that appraisal. Uh, we can't make a deal. If we made a deal, it's subject to the appraisal, so what's the difference?
Or I get my administrative relief and we just, then we wait for the next guy to get, and you do this for the next one before it even comes about.
I, I don't think it's fair to either of us to give you the award without knowing what the appraised value's going to be. That's part of the formula.
But that's kind of why we went.
That I'd like to add on this appraisal, that it would be up to our, the, the village's legal team to decide what that appra, what it is we're appraising. Are we appraising a vacant lot or a lot with a, with a permit? And, and they're, and, and I know your, your impression is that it's an appraisal, the appraised value of a lot with a permit, but I'm not sure if that's our legal.
If we don't get a permit.
Excuse me, Mark, okay? Can, can we, I, I want, uh, John, quick, to, to give us a little bit of advice here, or Kimberly, I, I think at this point, we're trying to change something right here midstream when he's coming. So John, can you, uh, or Kimberly, can you tell us what we'd like to do here?
It's my recommendation at this point that what I'm hearing from all of you and from John and from staff and from, um, the, the resident, that we still have too, far too many questions on the table, and I think we need to go back, have a few additional conversations and bring this back to you.
And defer it?
Yeah.
Is that, is that okay, John? Can we defer this?
Yeah, you could just move to, you can move to defer.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, okay.
Chris doesn't like a delay, but I think in the long run, we'll all be better off for it. We're making a hasty decision without all the necessary information.
Okay.
Just, just because this happens to me all the time, and it's another council meeting in another four hours. I mean, we, I, I, I thought like I was being, you know, proactive in saying, hey, I give you guys two months, you know, me and John will talk, we'll, we'll figure something out, you know, holidays, whatever, and, and just, here we are, like, you know, different plots are going to sell, other things are going to move down the road. Like, I just think, you know, I, I don't think it's fair to me, like, obviously, you know, I, if you guys all vote on it, I don't have a choice, but I'm just giving you, you know, the matter that I don't know if any administrative relief lots have been kicked down the road.
Okay, Chris, we, we understand, but at this point right now, we're not, we're sitting here and, and that's what I said to John, we, we, we need to let him look into it, let Jennifer, we need to figure this out, and then we, we, and they'll, they will work with you, and we need to bring this back, man, because we're not, there's too many, too much here and there and everywhere. So, and I know it's unfortunate for you, but they, Kimberly, will they work diligently? Can we work on this? That we're, we're not going to push this down the road for months?
Absolutely. I'll work with staff, and I will also work with all of you to make sure that when we bring it back, you know, we've completely vetted the idea of appraisals, property appraisals, all of the different factors that you guys have brought up today. We will definitely do that.
Okay.
And can we say that staff has authority to order an appraisal for this property while we're, I mean, you don't, there's no reason to not get that, right?
Yeah, I, I think that would fall within the manager's authority too.
Yeah, they're not much.
And, and again, along with that authority would be a very, a legal opinion about how that, what are we appraising? Because there's a big difference between appraising a vacant lot and a lot with, so that, that's a legal position that we're taking. Is that fair to say? We are looking at this legally.
A hundred percent.
Chris, I, I think, as far as I'm concerned, I, I'm, I, I'm very sorry that you had to spend your time and come here when you've complied with everything that the village told you to comply with, just like everybody else, and we've, that I know of, maybe that was, the, the one next door was something totally different, but I don't know any administrative reliefs, Mark, that, I mean, I got mine a long time ago that were turned down. We've, we've always, you know, given them out.
This is the first one I can recall.
And, you know, and I understand there's some neighbors that didn't want something built and stuff, and you were trying to work with them as well. So, uh, so anyhow, it's unfortunate, but so counsel, do I, uh, do I hear a motion to defer it?
I just want to make one comment. Uh, Chris, we have special call meetings at a moment, moment notice all, all the time, not to make you wait 30 days for our recommendation or whatever. I'll make it a point to have you included with the special call meeting that has not been designed for you appropriately, but have you put it on so we can hear this.
Appreciate it. I'm, 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 I mean, it's probably going to take a few weeks to get an appraisal and stuff anyways.
Well, we'll, we'll, we'll move that, we'll accelerate, fast track it.
Yeah, okay. Hey, John, do we need to do anything? If we're going to defer it, then we don't, we're not going to have people in favor or oppose and all that, right?
Yeah, it would just be a motion to defer, um, and since there's no action being taken, testimony would not be required.
Okay, all right. So do I hear a motion?
I'll move for approval of a deferral.
Do I hear a second? All right. Marnie, we have a, a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please?
Councilmember Mark Gregg.
Yes.
Councilmember Henry Rosenthal.
Yes.
Councilmember Elizabeth Jolyn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Sharon Mahoney.
Yes.
And Mayor Buddy Pinder.
Yes.
The motion passes five to zero.
Chris, thank you for your patience.
Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. All right. He's, he's talking, he was saying that if.
We don't have one scheduled.
No, we don't have one scheduled, but we could schedule one for, just for this hearing for Chris.
Yeah, and just a reminder, we have, there are advertising requirements for, for this type, so we would, the, we would have to comply with the.
Follow the, yeah, yeah. The notice, yeah. Okay, so we are on now, let's see. Are we on?
We're on tab F.
F, yes. Sorry, John. I'm getting ahead of myself here. Okay. All right, so it's council, that's where I thought. It was, it's messing me up with the F there. Mayor, Council Communications, okay? Uh, Mark, discussion of the Village Council reconsideration of an ordinance to allow accessory dwelling units, ADUs?
Yes. It's, it's, I don't think it's a, well, I guess it is a reconsideration. I think every year that I've sat on the council, I've attempted to persuade the council to take interest and, and support moving forward with an ordinance for accessory dwelling units. So here it is, the first meeting or two of 2024, so I'm going to try it one more time. Um, I, I think y'all are all familiar with it. Um, these things, we're, we're learning more each time I bring it up. I think more and more people talk about it. I have gotten a lot of comments, positive comments about this. Um, people are interested in it, and, and one of the things that I'm so very interested in it about is the fact that we have a chance to offer an opportunity to create affordable housing that does not have to involve the clearing of any land. It can probably involve, uh, reconfiguring interior space in an existing building, and it will be something that can happen very quickly. In other words, we don't have to wait years for loans and construction and permits and so forth. This can happen fairly fast. That's the good part. The bad part is the devil is in the details. And so we've had, I think the LP, or the Affordable Housing Committee has talked about this a few times. When I sat on it, before 2020, we talked about it, because I was a proponent for it then. And so it's, you know, for those who don't know what they are, it's like a mother-in-law apartment, or around here, we call them a downstairs enclosure. Um, but there would have to be some pretty serious conditions and restrictions. No, they wouldn't be used for a, a bootleg, a vacation rental. Uh, it's for workforce housing, and the person that, or persons that would live there would have to work here, or at least in the county. Um, I spoke with Jennifer about this earlier today. She is very familiar with this because where she came from up north, this is a common thing. Uh, we are not reinventing the wheel here. And so she's offered to, and I, I've asked her to, if she would be willing to come back to us with some sort of a, I'll call it a presentation. It could be an outline, a report. I, I don't know, I'll leave it in her good hands. I don't know how much time she has to do it, but I don't feel a time crunch to get it done next week. But I'm just looking for support from the council and direction to the staff to pursue this just to the next step. We don't have to create the ordinance, and I think the public was going to want to weigh in on this because there's a whole lot of variables and a lot of questions and how we want to do it. There's, there's good things about it. There's some things that might not be good things about it. So if there, I'm just wanting to get us on first base, and if, if you're interested, let's do it.
The, I had the whole council sent the electronic version of the AARP thing. They did a whole spread in their magazine on this country wide, talking about the whole country, how this is, what it's doing, and how it's helping with affordable housing in the whole U.S.
It, it, it's a, it's a, it's a huge. It, it's a, it's a, it's a huge bonus, it's, it's a solution to a big problem. Orlando has it, Alachua County has it, St. Petersburg has it, Key West has it. So why can't we have it? What's wrong with us? So I, I know there's a lot of hesitation and, and questions about how to do it, and that's what I would like to do, to get to a point where we have a chance to discuss that, and, and, you know, we're going to have to probably pass an ordinance or two, and work with the Department of Commerce on how, you know, how is this going to be, do we need allocations, and, you know, all that stuff. I, I'll tell you, I called the property appraisers' office, and I was concerned, one of the earlier requirements that were discussed is that the person that's creating it has to have a homestead exemption on the property, very much like the, the loan program that we spoke about earlier today. In other words, it's an owner-occupied arrangement. We don't want to create a out-of-town slumlord situation. And I was concerned that if you had a homestead and you rented out part of it, you would lose your homestead exemption. The answer is no. They come in, they, they assess how much is used for the rental, and then they carve that out, and then everything else is still your homestead. And it doesn't impact, I mean, it's not considered a multifamily dwelling, so when you go to get a loan, you're, you're still a single-family, Fannie Mae, Frannie Mae qualified kind of a loan product there. So we, we're not the first ones, it's not, it's not something we have to create from scratch. So I'd like us to try to just take a look at it, you know, we don't have to pass it if we don't like it, but if we don't start, we'll never, never try it out, so that's my speech.
Jennifer, can you, since you've had some experience in this, can we get you to bring something, or your team to bring something back to us on where, I mean, work on something for this? I mean, I know we have enough items already, but, you know, Kimberly, maybe we could even get her some help on this, that.
I spoke with Councilman Gregg this afternoon a little bit about this, I'm happy to work on, you know, some kind of presentation, some of my experience about this, and just some of what's going on around the country regarding these, and even in Florida itself, so happy to do that. Obviously, we just need consensus from the council, add it to the after-action report, and add it to the list of items that the planning department's working on.
Okay, okay. Go ahead, Henry.
Just a question, what has held us, what has held us off from doing this in the past?
Political will.
No, I thought it was.
No, I'm talking about FEMA, or you, you name it, there's somebody that we have to satisfy to make this happen. Do you have that answer?
I do not have that answer.
You know, Henry, I think that's a good question. Oh, sorry, go ahead, what's?
I was just saying, because this is, I say, I don't have that answer, only because this is the first time it's been discussed since I've been employed with the village, but I'm happy to look at past, you know, conversations among the village, and talk to people who've been here longer than myself, to find out what's been, like, the stall or in the past, and.
Talking about just enclosing.
The downstairs enclosures.
We're not talking about.
Sure.
A side lot being used for.
Right.
Garage, or a pool, or anything like that.
And it's already built, right?
Well, it, it, it's up to us, the, the sky's the limit. We could.
I understand that.
Do anything we want.
But then, the county, which I proposed a couple of years ago, to follow the county and the planning process to 2026, which I got lured down on, but that's beside the point, but we're not dealing with what I spoke to a couple of years ago, the usage of a side lot. We're used, we're talking about the usage of the building that is there, and enclosing the bottom portion for if some, somebody else.
Well, it has to be above flood, we can't violate FEMA.
I understand that as well, so.
I'd say Department of Commerce would, you'd have to satisfy Department of Commerce, definitely, because this would be an LDR change, and obviously, they, they would come into play.
Right.
I, I don't know if they, if that, they've ever balked at it in the past, I just know that they would have to be satisfied.
That's what I'm reaching for, so if you, if you guys don't mind, you get together and.
And I can just.
Answer my question.
Off the top of my head, knowing everything would require, any additional dwelling unit would require a BPAS allocation, so I'm sure that's been part of the challenge in the past as well, so we'd have to consider that moving forward as well.
Very much in favor of your proposal. I credit you for all the efforts you've put into it, and that's it, I'm done.
Sharon, you or Elizabeth have anything you want to say? Okay, all right, so we can move on then, Mark?
And to emphasize that this is not a, a do-it-tomorrow kind of thing, you have other, higher priorities, but if we could just at least kind of get it into the queue moving along. Thank you very, very much.
Jennifer, I got an idea, maybe when you're in Tallahassee, you could talk with, with DEO, whether it's Barbara Powell, or Meredith Ivey, or the Secretary of DEO, so, yeah.
I'd be, I'd be happy to talk to the Department of Commerce about some of these items. Thank you.
And we've made a request of our lobbyists, that was one of the agencies with, with Jennifer's input, that we indicated we wanted to, to meetings with Department of Commerce.
Okay, cool. All right, B then, so it's tab G. Mark?
Okay, so this is a.
Public comment?
John? No, no, this is a mayor, council, there's, is there public comment, John, or not?
No, these are discussion items.
You got it, okay.
So I put this item back on the agenda, it may look familiar to you all, we voted on, we had this ordinance on here, this is the one to relax the minimum lot area size requirement by way of a variance, to allow a few lots that are just under the legal size limit, kind of like a fish, I guess, to be utilized, to be developed. And we voted on this, and we passed it unanimously on the first reading. We're supposed to wait six months, which I think we're close to that, six months for reconsideration, so I'm asking to, if we could reconsider this at, on the March agenda, because we have advertising and other things, but in essence, this came to us, I think, when the prior planning director was here, at the request of a, of a former council member, Chris Santi, who has a lot that's just a little shy, I think a couple hundred feet, of being big enough to build a duplex on. And my understanding, he'll, he'll weigh in on this when the time comes, if we get it on the agenda, but my understanding was for purposes of creating affordable housing. I spoke with Jennifer earlier, and I, my question was, how many other lots do we have that are like this? And the staff has identified maybe three more approximately, so this, the impact of this would be just a few lots, but it, it may also provide a benefit to the village overall by allowing someone to use a smaller lot that we would otherwise, maybe, I don't know all the facts of it yet, but possibly have to purchase because they couldn't develop it. So I'm just asking.
They're less than 4,500, because you have to have 4,500.
For residential medium, yeah, you have to, minimum is 40, other, other districts might be bigger, like native areas, like four acres or whatever. So, so I'm just asking that we take a second look at it, and if you want to, and if you don't, you don't. That's it, straight up.
Anybody have anything they want to say on any discussion?
I'd just say, you know, I appreciate your bringing it up and talking about it in this forum, I'm, I'm personally not interested in revisiting it at this time.
I'd be interested only if it's guaranteed forever affordable housing, the properties. Don't want to do it for somebody's home.
Sure.
Do it only for affordable housing.
Jennifer was not involved in the background work on this, the, the first time it came around, and when we spoke today, she had some suggestions about how it could be refined that might make it more palatable, so to speak, for us to approve, and that was one of the features or conditions that we could put in there, so I think that does the trick.
So we're all right, Mark? We're good? We're done with that?
Okay, well, I mean.
Are we bringing it back?
He mentioned in March, so are we okay with March?
He didn't, you didn't weigh in, nor did Henry.
Yeah, we've got, we've got two.
My only comment is, it's somewhat adverse to the comp plan, and someday, within the near future, I hope the comp plan, along with everything, everything, everything else, will be completed. But right now, this is, this suggestion is adverse to the comp plan. That's my only consideration.
Okay. I, I don't have a problem with it, if it's, if they identify it's less than a half a dozen properties, then I don't have a problem with it. We, we, I mean, if it's a bunch of them, and like the vice mayor said, I believe it's, if it's for affordable, like a duplex or whatever, Mark was saying a minute ago, if it's a half a dozen or less properties, it's not that big, it's not going to make that big of a effect. So, that's my opinion, so.
So Mayor, as I hear, the direction of three, at least, are that Jennifer, John, and I will work together to find some options, some palatable options, and we will put it on a future agenda.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Public comment?
Do, just a discussion, right, John?
There'll be public comment when it comes back, yeah.
Okay, yep.
Thank you.
Okay, so we're on to Village Attorney, Village Manager Communications, you guys have anything? And then I want to speak about one thing before we.
Yep, I just have one, the statement that I was going to read on the executive session.
Okay.
Pursuant to Florida statute section 286.0118A, governing public meetings, I as the attorney for the Isle of Maratha Village of Islands, wish to advise the village during this public meeting that I desire advice concerning the litigation of Daniel J. Galizio versus Isle of Maratha Village of Islands et al., in the Circuit Court of the 16th Judicial Circuit in inform Monroe County, Florida, case number 23-CA-000440-P. I ask that we hold an executive session on February 15th, 2024, at 4:00 p.m. Attending the session will be the mayor and council members, village manager, myself, John Quick, and Special Counsel Brian Koji.
Okay. Everybody okay?
Wait, that's a question, right?
You starting at four o'clock again, on the 15th?
Yes.
Okay. I'm good with it.
Okay.
On, on February 15th.
Okay. Uh, okay, so the.
Next week.
Um, the vice mayor would like to talk about the next week's schedule, so Kimberly, can we?
I did print up for all of you the agenda for next week, I've also included some information from HR, so I have that for you, and vice mayor?
Can we, I heard a rumor today about one of the candidates, is that, how do we address that?
We will be discussing that with you offline.
Okay.
If, I, I'm assuming I understand what you're asking?
You understand? So.
I believe that we're going to be, the attorney's going to reach out to us individually?
Correct, the attorney will reach out to you individually to give you some guidance on selection criteria, et cetera, things that can be considered, and things that cannot be considered in your decision-making as you move forward.
Yeah, Allison will be, will be calling each of you individually. I've also asked her to attend on the 17th, since we have the lunch and the public meeting that way to ensure that there's, we comply with the labor laws.
So can I ask a, a follow-up there? So you're saying that you're going to provide information about, about appropriate, I don't know, questions or something?
Yes.
Could I get that in writing, please?
Get the.
Whatever kind of information you're going to provide on a phone call, could you put it in a document so that I can read it and have it to refer to?
Sure, I can ask Allison to do that.
Yeah, that would be, I, would anyone else like that, and presumably, you're trying to keep us out of legal trouble?
Correct.
Would anyone else on the council like that in writing?
Yes, yes.
Oh, good, okay, super.
Yeah, I would, that's, that's fine.
So can I ask a, a, kind of a procedural, I guess, kind of a question? I believe, it's my belief, that it would be good for the candidates to be introduced to at least the department heads, I don't know if you've already planned to do that or not, I haven't read this, but they want to know who their new boss might be. I, I think they do. So can that be built into the schedule? Is there enough slack in the meetings for that to happen?
I would see absolutely no reason that that couldn't happen, number one.
Is it appropriate?
Yeah, no, absolutely, it's also appropriate. We, we have the tour that originally we thought was going to involve council, we are no longer going to involve council in that tour, it's going to be staff who are going to be attending that tour, so it's also not going to be open to the public as well. So that's an opportunity for the candidates to meet with staff that they would be supervising, and in addition, we also have, of course, the social hour, and, you know, the staff is more than welcome to attend that and give a bit of a flavor of Isle of Maratha and the folks that they'd be working with.
I just don't want the staff to meet their boss for the first time on his first day at work.
No, I agree.
That's all.
And the wives are included in the tour.
My, I, I.
I think it's their families, yeah.
On the tour?
I believe that it said that the, certainly the lunch, I believe that they were, I don't recall if it was the tour or not as well.
The tour, I believe, is only the three candidates, myself, our AJ, and our police, our fire chief.
Well, I would prefer the wives to be included, if they can.
Okay.
Make it happen.
Okay.
Because they have a viewpoint as to what it looks like here as well.
Understood.
So.
Yeah, we will certainly.
Arrange that, I would appreciate that.
Reach out, yeah, we will certainly reach out to them and ask them if they would like to attend, and of course, they'll be included on all of the other, other than the actual interview with each of you.